The first item on the agenda, 4.01, are public comments. A total of 30 minutes is set aside for public comment at the beginning and end of the meeting. The maximum time allowed for any one speaker is three minutes. Public comments at the beginning of the meeting are limited to items on the agenda. Persons who wish to participate in the public comment portion of the meeting must state their name and the specific topic about which they wish to speak. As speakers, must limit comments to issues appropriate for public discussion. Compliments or complaints about student discipline, specific student issues, or personnel must not be addressed during public comment. If you have a personal issue, you're welcome to come up at the end of the meeting and speak with any board member or member of the central administration staff. Also, we have now, and it's really great, on the website, we have public comments, answers to questions that people have. So if you wish to submit a question in writing and give it to up here at the front table, we'll be delighted to answer your questions. Thank you. Does anyone have a comment on an agenda item?
In slow shower, found these fish kill. Good evening, Board of Education, superintendent administrators, and community members. Agenda item 7.04. Minutes from the September 21st board meeting are still missing my public comments. I ask that a board member make a motion for the minutes to be corrected, and all public comments from that night be added and then approved. I find this violation of open meetings law by the board and the oath of office by the clerk reprehensible. Agenda item 5.01. Responses to community questions for the board. This need, there needs to be a meeting agenda added to each meeting for 30 minutes that address the questions of the community from the prior board meeting in a public forum, and then you can post those questions to the district website. In review, I had asked two simple questions, one regarding zero-based budget. This doesn't answer my question. So, these are vague. My daughter made a comment about an issue on the bus. The answer to that was, and I'm glad that it was finally rectified, but the situation was never reported to Transportation. It was reported to the building administrator, nothing was done. You expect a 10-year-old to contact, I guess, the head of Transportation? These vague answers only create more questions and do not actually answer the questions in most cases. Who is answering these questions? If a question is for a specific board member, then is that specific board member going to answer this question? Board members need to answer the question in public and not hide behind this process. This is laughable, in my opinion, and once again shows your inability to want to work with the community. So your board vote is just readdressed, again, in my opinion. Agenda items 6.03 and 9.01. Budget conversations and timelines. One item right away that should be eliminated is TBIS. Once again, why is this district driven by this program? Show me the data that this program is working for the district. Has fighting been reduced in the high schools? I don't want to hear it's going to take three years for this program to be implemented. I guess our brand money is gone, so now you're going to have to find a way to use school tax dollars to pay for this. So now we're going to cut more programs and more resources from teachers to continue to fund this nonsense. Nobody wants this program. I have outlined the issues with TBIS, especially the negative effects it has on our special education students and mainstream students at prior board meetings. Are any of you going to speak up about this? I'd like to hear your opinions. And am I reading these timelines correctly? You have a budget here set for May 3rd, excuse me, May 3rd, 2016. Is that the public hearing to hear comments for the community? If so, you have a budget vote scheduled for April 19th, 2016, and then goes to public vote during the election process on May 17th, 2016, for the community to pass for a check. How can you, once again, like you did last year, approve a budget and then pay public comments? The tail wagging the dog again here, ladies and gentlemen. This process works the other way around. We have the public hearing for comments first, before you vote on any public budget. You're violating educational law. I'll fight it at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else? If there are no further public comments at this time, comments from the board. Mr. Loomin.
Just a couple of comments up. I'd like to congratulate, for the John Jay girls soccer, as well as the John Jay football teams for being exceptional double A champs, continued success in the regionals. I also happen to attend that PTA council meeting in Brinkleyhoff, where a lively conversation on, very lively conversation took place on the present K-28 report card. The administrator did an excellent job in trying to explain why the report card was changed, after much discussion by the public. I don't think it went to, not that great. Perhaps in the future, discussion can take place, try to explain why the report card was changed to what is present, to its present state. That's all I'd like to say.
No comments?
Want to go?
Okay, Mr. Rubin.
Well, I'd like to congratulate, like to congratulate the little doctors at this school, Wappinghurst Junior High School. They had a blood drive, and I came here. It was well attended, I donated some blood as well.
They rejected it.
Not this time. I had the opportunity to go to Myers Corners Elementary School for their fall festival parade, and that was just a wonderful, wonderful parade to see those hundreds of kids. It was the day before Halloween, they were all dressed up, and that was just a great, the kids were so happy to see, it was good to see. Visited Evans Elementary School as part of the adoptive school visit, and had a little talk, nice little talk, and visit with the principal there. I also had the opportunity to attend the PTA meeting that you were at, the PTA council meeting, that was informative, but also the PTA council forum that was held here on the heroin epidemic. Madam President, let me just give to you some of the literature that I received there, if I may. It was an informative thing, but one of the things that I'd like to say is I take offense to some public allegations that were made by a Dutchess County Legislature, Joe in Coronado, alleging that this school district does not take seriously the drug problem and has little or, has done little or nothing for that. I think that's very far from the truth. It's unfortunate that he spoke in the inflammatory manner that he did, and I wish in the future that if he has questions, that he would address our administration prior to making just public comments.
Is that the only one who made that comment? Drew, was that the only person who made those derogatory comments? Very little knowledge?
Well, he did, Mrs. Jaba, who was hosting that, did, did ask the, there was about 130 people there, say that if there were anyone in the community, there were board members, Mrs. LaValle, myself were there, I don't know if anybody else was there, but the public can come and talk to us and express their concerns.
Thank you. Mrs. LaValle.
I'd like to thank all of the students and teachers and administrators for the lovely package we received on the Board Celebration Week. I went through the cards and the gifts, and they were just very precious, and I want to thank you all very much. I had the opportunity, and I want to thank Mrs. King from John Jay and Mr. Thompson from Wappinghurst Junior. I had the opportunity to visit both schools and for them, and my legs were still a little sore from climbing up to the clock, but it was well worth it. The building is beautiful and had some wonderful conversations and saw great things going The NAC results came out this week, the National Assessment of Education Progress. For the first time in 25 years since the origination of the assessments, the national math scores dropped, and for the first time in 16 years since 1996, the reading score dropped. I think we need to look at that. We have 10 minutes allotted to the teacher rating APPR concerned tonight. I think 10 minutes is really not nearly enough time to address the lynchpin that holds the current educational reform in place, especially when we have math scores for the first time in 25 years dropping nationally on completely independent evaluation. So I think that we really do need to make an effort to look at what the reform is doing to our education system and to our children.
Mr. Somer? Mrs. Martin? Hi. I had the opportunity to attend Wappinghurst Junior High's Career Day last Thursday. It was a wonderful presentation. The students were engaged and interested, they had time in the classroom, they had a talk on the arts in the auditorium, and they had time in the gym where they went around to 40 different booths from both for-profit and nonprofit organizations in the community, where there were many, many interesting things. We got to pet a tarantula. That was fun, actually, you know, they're interesting. Their heads are smooth, their legs are hairy, but their heads are smooth. All right, on Friday, I went to Fishkill for their trick-or-treat through the village. Again, this was a wonderful involvement with the whole community. The children dress up and they go around to different merchants, and the village police help with all the traffic, and it is just a wonderful occasion. And it works, again, such a smooth, smoothly run event. And then that evening, I attended Fun Night at Evans, and they have a terrific, I have, last year I went to the one at Oak Grove, and the year before at Sheep's, so I'm trying to get around to all the schools, and this was really great. They had a sing-along with Mike Clark, they had a haunted house down in the art room, they had crafts in the lower grade rooms, Boo Bingo in the library with the principal and her husband, Mrs. Hernandez. They had cupcake decoration in the cafeteria, games in the hallways, and karate demonstration in the gym. So they had a lot of very interesting things going on there. Any other comments? All right, the superintendent's report. Mr. Carrion?
Good evening. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Education. My superintendent's report is round and short because we have several presentations tonight which is part of the superintendent's report. I'm just pleased to announce that on December 5th, we will be having our first district-wide parental workshop with an array of workshop sessions that will stem from sessions regarding the standards-based learning, to STEM, to technology, to going, also discussing social and emotional and drug awareness sessions for parents. We hope to have an array of sessions so that parents can actually sign up and attend different sessions. Our plan is to have three sessions that morning, repeat the sessions twice so that way parents don't feel that they have to take one session over another, and hopefully we will have a great turnout. We will be working very hard to advertise for this event. Dr. Carboyle, our Assistant Superintendent for Courtyard Instruction, as well as our Executive Director for Special Education Student Services, Mr. Zibb. We are working closely together to put this event together, and we look forward to having the parental workshop that was included into 2015-16 board approved budget that was approved by the community, and we are excited about having this day together. At our PTA council, our Madam President requested that I talk a little bit about our district and the work that we do behind drugs. We definitely, from our secondary schools, even our elementary schools, we work very closely with CATE, and we have a series of workshop sessions that really talk about drug awareness at the secondary level. There are several distinct activities regarding drug awareness as well. We plan to, part of the parental workshop is to continue to really provide parents with that type of awareness and how drugs are affecting our community. In addition to that, Dr. Bond did a very good job at the PTA council meeting, really indicating all the different aspects that, since he had been the principal at John Jay and the time and effort that we put in as a school district in terms of drug awareness.
6.01, the education law 3012D Annual Professional Performance Review.
year, the law has changed, and what we're going to be discussing is educational law 3012D, educational law 3012B as opposed to what presently we have in our district, which is educational law 3012C. APPR, educational law 3012C, as you can see, I just bulleted some of the more important items, required annual professional performance reviews of principals and teachers. And these are teachers of record. This evaluation is only for building principals, not for assistant principals, not for the superintendent, not for any other administrator, but specifically for principals and teachers of record. A composite score rating from highly effective to effective, developing, and ineffective, that's what we refer to, and you've probably heard the acronym, HEIDI, or HEIDI, the HEIDI score. Principal and teacher effectiveness based on performance, measures of student growth, achievement and evidence of education effectiveness based on meeting New York State teachings or the state leadership standards. And I actually indicated right there the website where you can actually go and get more detailed information. On April 13th of 2015, Chapter 56 of the laws of 2015 was signed into law, adding a new 3012D to the education law. So what you see up here is education law 3012C, which the state education department has been acting on 3012Cs since the year 2012, I believe. I'll give you a brief synopsis also of what 3012C entails, which is teacher observation, and this is for teachers that we're looking, we're paying attention to right now, teacher observation, which adds up to 60%. Two observations, one has to be announced, the other has to be, at least two observations, you can have more than two. What has to be unannounced, the student growth on state assessments or comparable measures student learning objectives, which we refer to as SLOs, 20%. And also a local assessment, which is 20%, state-approved or locally-created standardized assessments. As you can see, the 60%, the 20%, and the 20% adds up to 100% of the evaluation score. And 3012D, the, as you can see now how it has changed, 50% is based on observation, have these two observations. One has to be by the building-level administrator or an administrator that works in the building. Therefore, a principal or an assistant principal can conduct one observation. The other one has to be, as they refer to, one independent administrator, which means an administrator that does not work, and I'm using everyday language, that does not work in the specific school building. Usually, we refer to that as the administrator that does not share the same BETS code in the district. An administrator who has a different BETS code, and those of you who are in education, we know that we have to report to the state annually the number of administrative students, teachers we have in the district each fall. The student performance is now based on 50%, 50% on the New York State assessments and regions, or other state-approved assessments, local state-approved assessments. Therefore, this has changed from 60, 20%, 20% to 50% for observation and 50% for student performance.
And that really, that really is the biggest, biggest shift. So, one of the, so, if, so one of the, one of the, the biggest shift being, there's actually been a lot less control being provided by the local district with the elimination of the local 20 points, and the state saying that any, if you don't get a growth score based on a local, based on a state assessment, and you need a slow student learning objective, rather than, you know, the district coming up with their own student learning objectives, the state's going to prescribe either their own formula or, or, or a menu of different student learning objectives we can choose from. So that's a big shift in terms of 3012C to D. The main issue as far as we can tell is, is that, you know, the state doesn't feel, as you see in the newspapers, they're not happy with the fact that 90-something percent of teachers in New York State are rated as either effective or highly effective, and that's really the practice of why they're trying to change the system that the governor feels like they need to, that that can't be so. And that therefore most likely is a result of local constraints and controls in place that are to be, as you're interested in my.
Or at least you felt that way.
So, and again, so with regards to, regards to how the, so there's two components to APPR, 3012D, observation and student performance. Observation will break down such that if there's a minimum of two observations, which most districts will probably opt for, but it's negotiable, and you can have more observations than that. One must be unannounced, and as Mr. Carrion said, if the building principal or an administrator in the building will conduct one of the observations, and the second one will be conducted by someone outside of the school, the first one, the one done by the person who's, who's an administrator in the building, will be weighted at a minimum of 80% the overall observation rank. So, and the person coming in as the independent observer, perhaps, let's say it was me, I would come into Fishville Elementary and observe teachers, my observation will be weighted at a maximum of 20% of the overall 50% of the value. It could be negotiated to where the district, the district agrees that we do.
10 minutes according to the district.
We need more time.
Just keep going.
Yes. Do we have to vote on whether we want to continue? I think so. How many, did someone make a motion, John, did you make a motion to extend the time? And second, Mr. Somer, how many are in favor of extending the time? Everyone, that's 6-0.
It can be negotiated to have up to, a minimum, a maximum of 9% of the initial building administrator observation, which accounts for a maximum of 90%. An independent observer can count towards 10%. There also is the option where the district can say, we want to do peer observations as well as a third observation measure, in which case that would, that could show, where you would have a building administrator, an independent observer come in, and a peer teacher who is trained. It has to be a peer teacher who is trained and also was effective or highly effective in the previous year to be able to come in and do a server observation, and then the point breakdown could be something like 80% to the building principal, 10%, or 15% to the independent observer, and 5% to the peer observer. It seems unlikely that most districts could even shoot that option.
So the heading you see up there is slightly incorrect in terms of the 80/20, the 80% must be conducted by the building-level administrator.
Minimum. Minimum. Okay. And, so, what's different now too with APPRC versus D, in C, everything operated under the idea of 0 to 100 points. You would get up to 60 points for your observable measure, up to 20 points for your state-provided score, and/or if you didn't get one from the state, you'd have a slow, or 20 points from a local, a locally-selected measure, which would either be a growth score or a proficiency score on a local test administered by the district. What's different now, instead of having those, the point value, is at the end of each component, the observable component or the student performance component, you're going to get an H, E, V, or I rating. And you're going to, you would look at this chart right here, and you would have, so you have your, you have your observable, your observation site category at the top, if you got an O-V-R-2, and we'll show you how it comes together with a formula, if you had an effective overall for your two observations, and you came down and you look at the student performance category and based on how you did in your student performance, you would look and see, well, I got, I got a developing here, so if you had effective on observation and a developing on student performance, your overall rating would be effective, and that's how we report it to the state. That's, that's the, one of the other differences. It's no longer about adding together and seeing what you are overall at 100, it's looking at each value and looking at this chart. What's unusual is, in the effective category, for student performance, there is a third option for teach, for the student performance rating that allows the district to negotiate to decide on using a third assessment, or that would be provided by the state. If you just, if the district decides to use that in lieu of just one assessment result, we would use a third, a second assessment, rather, the prescribed by the state, the district with, or the person who, if you got an ineffective on both the regular student performance category and that second negotiated assessment, no matter what you got on your, on your observable- got on your, on your observable, on your observation category, you could be given an ineffective. So if you got ineffective on both the assessment pieces, the student performance pieces, you would have no choice but to receive an ineffective from the state regardless of even you got a highly effective rating on your observation. It's an unusual clause in, in one that'd be, I'd be very surprised when you do that. But it is in there to where you base, put all your eggs in the assessment basket and say, if I get ineffective on both, I'm ineffective no matter what, even though I got a highly effective observation. So this would be what an observation category might break down, might look like in terms of a split. You could say that if it was eighty twenty, you could say that in each range, the point value on our rubric, so if we're going to have our observation rubric, it's going to be the same as what it was presumably in thirty twelve C, it would be a Danielson rubric two thousand and seven. We will use our, we'll have to look at the rubric and look at each individual domain and break out a point value for each domain, go through the observations, assign the points for each domain, and add them up to get a score for each observation. But remember, the building principal we weighted at eighty percent. So let's say you have a rating of three point, three and a half points for the first observation and the, and the, and by the building administrator, that's worth eighty percent. Your second independent observer comes in and their same rubric score comes in as a two point five, but that's only weighted at twenty percent. You would do the math on that and add the two together, two point eight plus point five equals three point three. And on this chart right here, three point three falls in the range of effective between the minimum range and the maximum range. And that's how you calculate whether or not it's an effective overall in the observation On the student performance ratings, this is the, one of the biggest changes, and let me think we have a comparison, this is probably a better way to look at it. This, under thirty twelve C, there were these, these, these values, zero to two, three to eight, nine seventeen, ten eighteen to twenty. These all correlated to the percentages of students achieving proficiency on a given assessment. In, in this particular example, you'll notice especially that on ineffective. On the, on the ineffective especially, and this is very concerning for some, the, the, the value goes from zero to twelve. So if you have, if you have less than sixty percent of your students, less than sixty percent of your students prove proficient on whatever the assessment is for the slope, you will get an ineffective rating on your, on your student performance measure. And you still have that, that all fire goes into this chart right here. So that's, that's the, that's the scary part. You have to, if you've got the sixty percent of your students have the proficiency, whereas before it was something closer to forty something percent in order to fall in that ineffective There, there is, all right. So the state, when they first brought out the, the new regulation, said that you must put this into effect for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year unless, unless you can successfully apply for and receive a hardship waiver. What was interesting about this hardship waiver process was that while the initial implementation plan for thirty twelve D was due on November fifteenth, the hardship waiver was due October thirtieth. So everyone, so, so everyone should apply for a hardship waiver on the, in the first go round because you don't know if your plan will even be approved on November fifteenth. And you'd have no way to go back and submit a hardship waiver if it wasn't because the deadline for the hardship waiver would have already taxed. So it was quite silly. But it was evident based on the fact that the state hadn't even identified approved slows, hadn't even identified approved other, you know, a number of resources needed to actually complete a bona fide A P P R plan, plus the fact that we had to do actual good paid bargaining on some of the elements in here, that it'd be really difficult, and I don't think anyone actually put forward a plan that was going to be due, that's going to be put forth to the state for adoption or approval by the fifteenth of November. So we put forth, Dr. Popovich put forth a hardship waiver, and it was actually approved by the state. The only snag with it is that it's good for four months. So we must, we must, again, continue to work for the, a plan for implementing thirty twelve D for the fifteen sixteen school year, and our next go around would be, our next deadline is March, March first. If we don't get a, a plan submitted to the state for March first, we need to put in another hardship waiver that'll take us through June. If we don't get a plan approved in March or before March, then we, we can complete the school year, the fifteen sixteen school year under thirty twelve C.
The other piece, Tim, is that there are seven hundred school districts in the state of New York, and I believe there are about less than thirty-five districts that probably submitted their plan for educational law thirty twelve D and they were approved, that were.
Okay. And then a couple little additional constraints and thoughts. Last year, or under thirty twelve C, where they said that a teacher would need in terms of, everything's sort of based on data, right? So to approve, to, to have a teacher count under thirty twelve C, you needed to have a minimum of sixteen assessment records. If you're a grade four through eight ELA or math teacher, you'd have to have sixteen, if the eight students who took both the math and ELA assessments, you need at least sixteen assessment records to actually happen to generate a score for you. Under thirty twelve D, the governor has not yet determined what the right number is, or they keep referring to it as small n. So that, that is what you might see, it's kind of, it's kind of interesting to see how far this has really been thought through. If someone doesn't have enough assessment records because perhaps of test defusals, the, the state says, that's okay, our system won't fall apart. You need to have a backup slope. A backup slope could be a yet determined entity based on the list of approved slows. Maybe it'll be a building score, which would be a common, would be a common backup slope we've used in under thirty twelve C. Corrective action plans. Corrective action plan, interesting thing to note about corrective action plans in the thirty twelve C is that if you're, if you're a teacher who received a highly effective, a highly effective observa, if you received highly effective on your observation component and ineffective on the student performance, and that became some sort of a trend amongst your teachers, the district, the state can come in, before it had no teeth, now the state can come in and say, we've got to take a look at this, this is not working. Obviously, if something is wrong because your assessment results don't support what you're observing in the classroom. And so they can come in and do a corrective action plan for the district. Tips and tips, this is the only, one of the good news things that came out of thirty twelve D. Currently, if there's a need for a tip or a pip, which would be a teacher, a teacher improvement plan or a principal improvement plan, based as a result of getting a developing or ineffective score in the thirty twelve C, you could, the, the constraint with that was you needed to provide that tip to the teacher or principal within ten school days from the start of school. That's very difficult when we're still trying to get all our data together, which you'd think would be easy, but it's really not, especially because we don't get everything we need from the state till the end of August to actually complete our A P P R data. What they've done in the thirty twelve D is said, okay, your due date for tips and tips is really going to be October first or shortly thereafter. So it's a bit of a reprieve that it's a lot easier to work with. Three strikes, three strikes is if a teacher gets graded ineffective three years in a row, automatically put into a thirty twenty A. All right, they automatically go on a fast track to, it doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean the district has to actually terminate, but it means that they have to go through the process of a thirty twenty A on that teacher if they get ineffective three years in a row. And the waiver process we already talked about.
Do you have questions? We can answer those questions now if you want us to go into the next report, presentation, and possibly combine it together. Well.
All right. Just a little suggestion, since it was kind of hard for us, even who have heard these terms before, to follow all these, when it goes on the website, could you put an explanation for each of those things on that last page? I know you had student learning objectives earlier, but I think people would like to see it again. And also, yeah, have all the in parentheses what all those things mean because it's, it's very complex and difficult to follow. Thank you.
Sure. But the late side.
Well, if you just put it on, if you could change, if you could modify that slide so that it's, yeah, that page, so that they're right there and people don't have to look it up in an index or go on it. All right. Thank you. Mr. Lumia.
I think a rare question we should ask him now. I still post a waiting. So I have a couple of questions. A report card is based on one through four, correct?
Our current elementary category, six, one, four, plus and minuses.
How does that equate to percentages? Because if a person's going to get an eighteen to twenty on student performance, the kid has to give you ninety to a hundred, ninety percent or a hundred percent after what, pass? Or get a score of ninety to a hundred percent?
If you're not, we're not comparing overall academic records to, these are, these are assessment scores. So these are assessment scores where it is based on proficiency, proficiency at state level being a one, two, three, or four. So these are deemed, if we're talking about the grade four through eight ELA or math assessments, what we're really talking about are the percentages, the percent, let's say you're, let's say you're a fifth grade ELA and math teacher, you know, you do, you have an elementary class. It is the percentage of students who achieved a three or a four on a state assessment for both the math and ELA combined together for your students. And it is, it is the result of what they determine to be growth on that assessment from those students' records from the prior year, that they determine that you, whether or not you are successful or not in achieving their growth.
But if students fail to take the test for whatever reason.
Correct.
How do they, how does that play into the percentages?
Remember the small n? So if they have enough to take, if they have enough student records, assessment records to, to satisfy whatever n will equal.
Suppose, suppose they don't.
Then, 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 then the teacher must be provided a backup slope.
Secondly, how does the, the range, for example, zero to fifty-nine percent, you get zero to twelve points, who determines what, how many points a person gets, a teacher gets?
The state. The state dictates that chart. We must follow that chart.
Zero to twelve.
Coming up.
How do you differentiate zero, one, two, three, four, five, up to twelve?
There's a, there's a formula that says, you know, X number, X number of percentage points proficient between zero and fifty-nine correlate. There's a full chart that goes zero to twenty, and it, it, it's on the state ed website. You know, we're just giving you the overall broad ranges that encompass the category H, E, B, or I.
Each student has to take sixteen assessment tests to.
No. Each teacher must have sixteen assessment records assigned to the student association. No, it could be sixteen students because I only teach math. It could be currently under C, anyway, we don't know, sixteen's can be the number, the magic number. It could be sixteen students if it's, if you just teach math, or it could be eight students if you teach general ed and you just, and they do English and, both English and math assessments, but it happens to be sixteen assessment records.
Mrs. Lava.
Can you, microphone please.
Microphone, just a mic.
Can you define this term student growth?
Yeah.
Student growth.
Student growth is the, and again, because it's only a measure between the fourth through eight ELA and math, okay? They look at a, how a student performs in, let's start with third grade. Every student, students who take ELA assessments and math assessments in grade three, their results are on file, and now those third graders become fourth graders. In the following year, when they take those, when they take those, let me break it down a little bit further. When they take those, you take those assessment records, you get a scale score. The scale score could be, I don't know, whatever, zero to a thousand, right? You get a scale score, and there's certain demographics that are unique about you that, well, not unique per se about you, but that would be calculated into it, whether or not you are a student with learning disability, you are economically disadvantaged, whatever. They take those couple little demographic pieces, and they look at your scale score, and they say, anyone who got between a three hundred and a three hundred and twenty-five for a scale score in this particular assessment, you are put into a group of students statewide who have the same demographics as you, who also got a scale score similar to you in that range between three hundred and three twenty-five. Fast forward to fourth grade, you take those assessments again, they run through the same exercise in terms of, you know, making sure that you're in together with your demographics. You take the assessments, and they look to see how well you performed against that group from third grade that you were blung together with, with that scale score range. And they say, how well did that group do on the grade four assessment compared to how well you did on the grade four assessment? And based on that, they determine whether or not enough growth was achieved. It's a crazy mathematical formula, but, and I'm sure it's erroneous in many ways, however, this is how they prescribe the, the, the grading solution to happen and whether or not you get a growth. And let's just for simplicity say, say, yes, you had growth, no, you didn't, under one particular teacher. Your whole class, same thing, grouped together by scale score, demographics and whatnot. Yes, they all had growth, no, they all didn't. The percentages of yeses equal the teacher's overall effectiveness score. That's for.
There's a video, there's a video on Engage New York, I've shared with the board, and we'll, we'll also share it in the presentation, that it's an animated video, which basically really breaks it down so that we can see how the growth scores.
Mrs. Hardman.
I don't have a question, I just feel it's necessary to raise the debate amongst researchers across the field in psychometrics as to the validity of this growth score calculation.
Anyone else? Mrs. Lava.
Can you give examples of slows? And are we going to be obliged to use the slows based on the percentage of opt outs on the assessment?
Under D or under C? Right, well, I can tell you what we've used, if that, if that's good enough. So what we've used, what we've used for slows currently would be, you know, the two easiest examples would be a building score provided by the state. So the state gives individual teachers who have assessed, who have, were associated to grade four, the ELA and math students, individual scores. But the overall performance, using the same growth theory that I told you, that we've talked about, is applied to all the student population of a particular building, and the building gets an overall score. So what we've used as a student learning objective globally, in some cases, would be the building score for whichever school. And if you did not get an individual score from the state, we would use that as a score. Another way to get a slope would be if you, if you had a, in our district, a pre-assessment, a local one, a locally created pre-assessment, and a locally created post-assessment, which might also be able to be used to double up for a final, final exam score for the class, let's say. We would look at both the pre and the post, and using a predetermined formula, identify targets against what we expect the student will get on the post test based on the performance of the pre test. And then we would again look at the percentage of the students in that class who met their target, go to that chart, and, and identify, based on the percentage, what they got for overall point value out of twenty points in this case for the, for the slope under thirty
I, just two concerns. First of all, it's almost impossible to determine the exact, when we're talking about individuals, human beings, which is the case of students, to determine exactly what demographic that describes them perfectly, since in many ways we're demographics of one. I think in comparison, I know that they have tried to rate some hospitals on the basis of cure rates or survival rates, and they found that some of the best hospitals were being downrated because they were taking the most difficult cases. So of course they had a higher death rate. It's hard to say how this can be applied to classrooms when students have different, have such varying degrees of difficulty in learning and, you know, perhaps other situations in their lives. And so how is the district going to deal with this straitjacket that they seem to be creating here?
We didn't create it, you only.
I know, you didn't create it, that's what I'm saying, it's being created. And how is the district proposing to deal with this situation?
The, the way we're proposing to deal with this situation is to sort of put A P P R in the back room. And what I mean by that is to really think about all the good instructional strategies that we should be incorporating. that we should be incorporating into our, our, into our schools. But, um, so basically it's really looking at what do, what do we believe in? What do, what, what is our philosophy, number one? Number two, um, what, what are some good assessment tools that are out there that speak to really measuring growth and, and providing teachers with enough information to help them guide their instruction? Let's remember that prior to thirty twelve C, um, our students were taking the Terranova assessments. There were many assessments throughout the years when I was a child, we took standardized assessments to measure growth. What do we, what do we want to look at and how are we going to incorporate this and include it into our instructional, um, delivery in our classrooms? In addition to that, really trying to look at the, um, the tool, the Danielson tool, which is, um, as Mr. O'Kima indicated, hopefully that'll be the tool that we will continue to utilize, but if that's the tool that we're utilizing is because it really does provide teachers with valuable input in terms of conducting a pre-observation, the actual observation and the post-observation. After determining, what are, what are some of the good components to, to, to instruction and assessments? After determining that, then looking at these pages by the state and, and seeing that hopefully they are approved assessments, that they are, they are an approved evaluation tool for principals and for teachers. Um, that is really the approach that we're looking at. I was probably one of the first people to write an APR plan in the state of New York. Dr. Carton, you do remember, there were only ten districts that submitted on time and, or a former district, we had no choice but to write an entire, um, APR plan. And what I can tell you is that when you let the plan manipulate you and the district, then you're treading on dangerous waters. But when you really think about what is it that we want to do for children? How do we want to support teachers? How do we want to support principals? It is our job to really try to stem away from that punitive aspect and really think about how is it that we want to support our students in our community, then in that respect, turn it over into the APR plan. So that is, I hope that answers your questions.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Rubin.
I just want to say that I applaud your efforts to try and meet the standards of the bar. I applaud you and your, I hope you and your, all of you and your efforts to try and meet the standards that the, uh, the bar set in there. I do, Mr. Hartman, know that whether or not that bar is appropriate in, in any respect, that's another question altogether. We don't have a choice, though. We, it's there and it's, it's a state that you've got to do.
Mr. Lumia.
Just one comment. Unless class, classes, classes are homogeneous in nature, it's going to be very, very difficult to measure growth. So it's going to become hard, I think. So if that is somehow.
Not on one side, it's on.
Well, unfortunately, the problem is teachers are going to be, based on the performance on state assessments, are going to be graded accordingly. So unless you have a homogeneous, kids at the same level, it becomes hard to measure growth for the overall, for that particular teacher and that particular classroom. So I don't know what the solution, I really don't.
And unfortunately, the state under D is relying more heavily on, on valuations even based on the assessment.
Which is crazy, I think it's very, it's unfortunate, I think something that has to be said, that's, that's, that's inappropriate, my opinion, but, but something that practically it's, whatever, whatever. But, uh, measuring growth is very difficult, extremely difficult. Anybody who thinks it is is crazy. I don't, I'll be honest. Anyway, that's all I want to say.
Uh, at the state convention, uh, as I reported at our last board meeting last week, uh, the state school boards pretty much agreed that the, uh, the new state drastic changes in the testing and in the APR system and, uh, are urging, uh, our representatives and state officials to reevaluate these. Uh, I read last week the resolution to as amended and, uh, if anybody's interested to look on the website, but in the meantime, as Mr. Rubin pointed out, we, this is the law and, uh, I commend the district for their efforts to try to mitigate some of the possibly disastrous effects of this. Thank you.
Well said.
Report, which will show a little of the different subgroups. But I'd like to show you some historical data that indicates, uh, based on our school report card, our two thousand thirteen fourteen school year enrollment. And as you can see, the total enrollment, um, was eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-four. The enrollment was based on our beds that we submit every year in October. It's the basic, uh, educational data system. The student enrollment by gender and then students by ethnicity. And which is the year's two thousand thirteen fourteen school year, but we'll move up to the previous school year, which is the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year. You can see that our enrollment declined from eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-four to eleven thousand four hundred and fifty-five when we were reporting in October of two thousand fourteen. Students enrolled by gender, it shows you our students enrolled by gender and our students enrolled by ethnicity. As you can see, we'll show you on this next slide, as of today, um, our total enrollment right now is eleven thousand ninety-five. So from just two years ago, from eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-four students, we're at eleven thousand ninety-five students. Um, and once again, we break down the information by the, by gender and by student ethnicity. The enrollment from two thousand, this, this provides you with a quick snapshot. So from previous school year to this school year, we have three hundred and fifty less students. In terms of our female and male, our students are all by gender, the percentage, percentages have not changed. Students by ethnicity, um, are as indicated, and these terms are, are indicated on the New York State School Report Card. White, we have, um, we, from seventy-four percent, we're seventy-three percent. Hispanic or Latino has increased by one percent from the pre, previous year. Our Asian or Native Hawaii has remained the same at five percent. And black or African American has remained the same from the previous year. Uh, multiracial has remained the same and, um, American Indian, Alaska Native, we don't have any one to report. Students by ethnicity, um, the concern that I believe, uh, Mr. Lumia was sharing and, and, um, some of you were sharing to the previous presentation, this is where we're talking about white, Hispanic, Latino, the different groups on the left side, you see by ethnicity. And then on the right side, what you can see is how others, how students can be identified for a second time, a third time, um, or a fourth time. So for example, you may have a student that comes from France who may be limited English proficient, who also has an IEP and who is also economically disadvantaged. Many times you don't think this exists, but it really does. Sometimes you'll find it with the Hispanic community, um, with certain, certain students and, and some, and many of these categories because of the fact of you still have, you, you decide how you, um, how, a parent decides under white ethnicity, they register their students in. So you can be Hispanic and sometimes when you see Hispanic now white and maybe put down that you're black or African American. So we have no control in terms of how parents register their children and how, um, they, um, feel that their, their ethnicity is. This complicates matters because when you look at student growth, and that's why that animated video that I was, um, sharing with you, um, not sharing with you, but I'm going to share the link with you, does explain how they continue to categorize the students to try to find out how they can measure this growth. And, um, Mr. Lumia, I do agree with what you said before. So this information for the previous year, as you can see, um, the, the data's here and I'm just going to keep moving for this present school year. So, um, these are the number of students that we have in the district. In terms of limited English proficient students, presently we have a hundred and two students. We have one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven students, five, five hundred and seventy-seven students, um, with an IEP and two thousand two hundred and fifty-nine students that are economically disadvantaged according to the state reporting system.
Would that be children who are on free or reduced lunch?
Yes, it's a bit complex now because we don't get that information as easily as they used to provide that information where, um, I think you're thinking back to where you would see how the data was provided in that respect to really show students that are provided free or reduced lunch.
Yeah, because, uh, that's, so it's a little more complex now?
It comes out of our food service.
Okay, uh, I guess my concern is that I know that the, uh, that a lot of students in the secondary schools don't want to be identified and therefore, uh, it looks as though a lot more children are, uh, economically disadvantaged in the elementary schools. But having spoken with the principals in the high schools and even in the junior highs, a lot of them are concerned that many of their students really should be getting free lunch, but they don't want to ident, self-identify for it. So I'm wondering how accurate this, this information is.
Well, there's, there's that and there's also the other problem is, you know, whenever, whenever food service actually thinks that they, interesting to jump in and come wrong, or whenever food service thinks that or suspects that someone might be able to get free lunch, they can certainly ask them to fill out an application, they might be embarrassed to do so. I believe they also, if, if they know for sure that there's a, there's a situation, even though the person is not, uh, actually, uh, filling out the application, they can provide free or reduced lunch, um, you know, based on that, uh, assumption or knowledge. Uh, but regardless, the worst part about these numbers and the fact that it ties to bed stays and our dependency on them for certain state calculations for funding, um, is that it doesn't necess, it's bed stay in this year, but it doesn't necessarily consider the kids who will receive free and reduced lunch this year. The application process for free or reduced lunch goes through like October, but bed stay is the first Wednesday in October that we have to report on. So a lot of these kids are kids from the previous school year, but they also might be students, you know, minus the students who've graduated, uh, so there's always a fear that our state calculations for funding might be based on a low number because we haven't received all the applicants yet, uh, for new students who haven't been, who haven't been applying versus the students that have been exited because they've left the district for, for let's say graduation reasons. So it is, it's a little bit frustrating, I'm sure, for Matt Fuster and for Kristen to rely on this information knowing that it is slightly wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Now we will look at the state scores for the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year and comparing, um, the scores to the previous school year as well as, um, how we feel it as a district and, um, in comparison to the state. As you can see, in English language arts, grade three, uh, our trustee, Ann Lavelle, is now far off in indicating that, um, the scores have dropped, um, in the state of New York. And, um, two thousand fifteen, um, thirty-five percent of our students, um, rated in levels three and four. In grade four, the scores did increase and from, from the previous year, um, from thirty-nine to forty-five percent. And as you can see, we're a lot higher in terms of our performance at levels three and four, um, than the state. The same, um, data we show you, um, for grades five and six, I'll give you a moment to look at it. As last year, I remember there was a lot of conversation about grade six when we provided the Board of Education in the community with this report. And if you remember, there were twenty-six percent of the students in grade six scored in levels three or four and this school year, it has increased to thirty-three percent, um, in levels three or four. Same for grade seven and eight, let's give you a moment to look at the data. Two thousand fifteen for grade seven in ELA, English language arts, um, we are right with the state educate, the state. And in grade eight, um, we went up six percent, points forty-five percent and the state is at thirty-five percent.
I just want to look at something here, the, if you look at, if you go back a slide, in the two thousand fourteen year, the grade six was twenty-six percent, but if you look at that same cohort for, for grade seven in two thousand fifteen, so if you go forward a slide, it's twenty-nine percent. So that cohort actually increased.
It increased.
By three percent. I mean, it looks like a, a huge drop from fourteen to fifteen, but when you look at the cohort itself, they're actually increasing. I studied some math. I forgot to turn, I forgot to turn on my microphone, I don't know if I spoke loud enough for people to hear that.
Here we provide you with the same, um, the data for our math assessments in grades three.
Good question. Does the fact the student did not take the test, will that affect the percentages?
It's a good question.
Again, we could have some good students not taking the test, which in fact would, or it's a bad.
So, um, students not taking the test, does it affect the percentages? That's a very good question.
I assume it does.
I assume it does too. I don't know if it, if it's up or down.
It can be up or down one way or the other, but it can affect. So that's why I think these statistics.
But we're going to show you also the, the percentage of test recalc that we have for this school year.
All right, so, uh, same information, similar information, uh, chart wise for math. Uh, there was notably, I'll spend a few seconds, we slide it so that you can have a chance to look at it. Uh, there, the, the trends are similar, uh, and, you know, you can, and you could look at, uh, prior year, um, and this is interesting, if you look at fifth grade and, and what Mr. Hartman was saying, uh, Mr. Hartman was saying, for, uh, two thousand fourteen, uh, school year, we had forty-eight percent of students get three or four on the grade five assessment. You take that same group of kids, not knowing which ones of those, of course, were test refusal, uh, and look at them for the two thousand fifteen school year, uh, thirty-seven percent was the proficiency performance on the grade six assessment. So while definitely it might, it might follow students, uh, it is affected by, I'm sure test refusals, I can just read a second, uh, for those numbers were like, uh, as well as testing, so, yep.
It could also be affected by the transitions that people had.
Transitions was another factor.
I think that this year we should be able to see, kids are staying at the same school for six years. I would expect hopefully that an increase in score, hopefully.
Hopefully, but if we, without testing the entire student body.
I understand now.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be, it'd always be.
But you, you would, I would expect the kids are there for six years, the teachers know who the weak kids are and they want to work with those, they're still supposed to go to a different school, where they have to get.
One would expect less transition.
Definitely, some type of fair.
Yes, Mrs. Laval. Were these hard numbers or are there cut scores involved for any of these?
You can look at all of that information on data@nicebed.gov, these actual charts came from that. You can get the full chart of student performance or scale scores, percentage of students getting those scale scores. Um, you can probably get cut score information on it, I don't have it off the top of my head, but, um.
Or you can come visit in my office and we'll cover it together.
Mr. Rubin.
But to Mr. To Mr. Lumia's statement is that we're not sure the, uh, if the tests correlate from one year to the other. Are they valid? Do they correlate? Do they measure the same thing? There's a whole slew of factors that again, we don't have the ability to measure those factors.
What I think is interesting that the state does define, uh, and through our local regional information center. information center, is data reports that associate to the learning standards based on the questions. We refer to them as our Level One reports, because that's how the state refers to them as the Level One data system. Inside the Level One data system, and we can show you examples of that sometime in the future, what the reports look like, it will actually show you a breakdown of performance based on learning standards for a grade level and subject. And so, what you might want, what you can look at in terms of, you might have three or four questions on a state assessment that ties to a specific standard. You might have, if you look, when you start looking at that item analysis report of how students did based on learning standard, you might be able to see trends and say, well, I did really good in systemic awareness in my building at this grade level, but I see that when it came to questions that inferred information from a text, my students performed poorly overall in the building or even at the teacher level. And those types of reports are at least interesting conversation starters when it comes to having those instructional conversations in the building where, you know, whereas this is the 50,000-foot view, there is ways to get a little bit more granular, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Grade eight performance is worth noting statewide as well. Grade eight, statewide, where we also.
Question over here.
Yes, Mrs. Hardeman. In grade eight, do all of our, except for the opt-dow, do all of our students take the grade eight assessment or only those who are not in algebra?
Right, those who are not in the honors math class in grade eight would take the state grade eight assessment. Those who are in honors, grade eight, will take algebra. In this case, this year was common for algebra.
Which affects, which affects that particular percentage because all the grade eight students, 100% of those kids passed, had been at Virginia High School in 19, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So, what has happened is we have selected out our top grade eight students because those are the students who are in our honors or grade eight math, which is our Algebra One, moving into the higher-level math track. And so, the students who are actually taking the grade eight math, New York State grade eight math, are those students who don't qualify for that higher-level math.
The state no longer requires us to provide the state grade eight assessment.
I just am pointing out some background information around those presentations. I'm not encouraging us to make all of those students take their test.
But what's also important to note quickly as well is that not all school districts, not all school districts provide that level of mathematics to eighth graders where they actually make them take grade eight math. Not every school district, I don't want to mention any names, but there are many school districts out there, even in the Westchester County with a high graduation rate where they are not provided that opportunity. So, it, it does make a distinction because there are children here that are high performing in districts that are taking that test.
To follow up on what Mrs. Hardeman said, New York State has the hardest tests in the country in both math and ELA. I was compared recently, a study came out about how the states statewide, states' tests and cut scores compare around the country. And I think Massachusetts was the next, was the next toughest, but New York was the toughest and that they were expecting a higher standard uncommon for any other state in the Union. So, when we look at those state scores, we have to take that into consideration also. Yes, Mrs. Lavelle.
I'd be concerned about what the growth score for the APTRC system will look like when the students go from seventh grade to eighth grade, where we have 40% proficiency and then we break them out from the eighth grade and it drops to 25%. That can't look good to the teachers.
What happens, though, is you can't compare apples to oranges, so a large percentage of those students who took the grade seven New York State math test will not be included and will not be able to receive a growth score. They will not be part of that small end that in grade eight because they have moved into the regions category, and so the regions, they don't measure against the grade seven. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Loquima, but I think I'm on track here. They, they can't get a growth score based on that grade seven math test. So, a lot of those children are moved out of being under consideration here.
I think it's also important to note that we, as you mentioned, the growth score, you do, it's based on the student growth from one year to the next. Therefore, if a child even scores a Level One or a Level Two, there's Level One with the plus sign, which indicates that the child is growing. And if that child shows growth, then the teacher does get credit for, for those students that are, that grow. The, that, I believe there was, there was an issue with a really high-performing school district where the students were high performing, they performed really well on the task, so they couldn't show growth, and that's where that lawsuit is taking place as we speak. So, it's important to note that it's not about just looking at levels three and four, but the work that we do, we really indicate the growth that we see in the individual students in all of our areas. Madam President, this is 20 minutes.
Okay. Could I ask for a motion to extend discussion? Yes, Mrs. Lavelle, and seconded by Mr. Rubin.
For another 10 minutes.
Okay. Did we want to limit it to 10 minutes or did we want to, change the motion? And if you're amending it by making it, just 10 minutes.
I would second the amendment.
All right, okay, then we have to vote on the amendment before we vote on the motion. All those in favor of limiting the further discussion to 10 minutes? Mr. Lumia, Mrs. Hardeman, Mr. Rubin, and Mr. Soma opposed to the amendment? Mrs. Lavelle and Mrs. Kelland, all right? So, we still, since we don't only have six people here tonight, I believe we still need five people. So, to go back to the original motion to extend debate without a particular limit at this point, is there a second for Mrs. Lavelle's? I'll second it. All right, those in favor of extending the discussion? Well, then I guess that's the end of the presentation. Excuse me, Mr. Carrion, the whole thing will be on the website, though, for the benefit of the public?
Yes.
Thank you. Six point zero three, budget calendar and process. Mrs. Brandl.
Good evening, Board of Education. Thank you for taking the time this evening to have a brief discussion with the Superintendent and I regarding the budget calendar process of 1617 year. Please stay advised that on the agenda this evening, the budget calendar that does become approved by the Board of Education is there for your review. As of last year, I guess Superintendent Carrion, financial terms and definitions were provided. We've provided those on the website this year again. Upstaging acronyms are there as well as full definitions for all of the financial terms that we use. If there are any questions, please feel free to reach out to us to ask about those financial terms, but that's the first step in our process. Also, new for the 1617 budget cycle is a few meetings to be set up called a budget conversation or maybe ABC meeting, whatever we end up calling it. One is scheduled for November 23rd at RCK, the other is scheduled for February 1st. There is no date for that. These will be published on the website with the, with the agenda as well as locations for these meetings.
This also goes with our goal to increase communication, and it's important for the Board of Education, because we want to address and really get information from our community to provide us with that information prior to our budget conversation in November with the community and our budget conversation February 1st.
The first step in the budget calendar is the meeting approved by the Board of Education of the budget calendar, and after that, the official work begins. We start to compile equipment requests, mean staffing, curriculum, homework, in-service, summer work. All of these start to get copied out and plugged into the 1617 budget as we move forward. Again, compilation and review, we refer to the Board of Education goals as we're working through the budget process. We have to use our estimates very, very carefully. We will have an interactive process with the Board of Education, we'll have these budget conversations, and we're really striving for a continued transparent process between the Board of Education and the community. As we build the budget, we'll be looking at the four pieces, general support, construction, transportation, and undistributed, and we will be continuously working with the administrative team to refine the data, the data and estimates that are used. We will respond to information from New York State as it becomes available, as you're all aware. We usually are waiting until the very last moment with regard to that. And we really want to make sure that we look to the Board of Education and to the community to provide up to as much feedback as possible. Whenever we'll have those budget meetings, we also have public comments, public comments, and we have the budget meeting. But our most important step is that final step where we want to evaluate and reflect on the budget process to see how we can really make, continue to make it and refine the process. Upcoming 1617 budget dates, based on the calendar that's happening in our package. Our first meeting is November 23rd for, for public forum, for conversation. January 11th, we'll present some to the Board of Education, two components to the budget. February 1st, the next two. February 22nd, I'm sorry, February 1st, I'm sorry, is another budget meeting. February 22nd, we'll be providing two additional pieces of the budget. April 19th is when the Board of Education actually has to approve the budget as per New York State guidelines. We have our legally mandated budget hearing that has to occur on May 3rd, that is dictated by the state with regard to how many days prior to the budget goals that that needs to be to be. And also, we'll have our May 17th 2016 budget.
Just a quick question.
Mr. Lumia.
Can the May 3rd be somewhat put before the April 19th?
As per New York State, there is a regulated two-week waiting period that we have to have that public hearing. Conversation can happen at board meetings with regard to.
Can the public, yeah, I realize that. My question is, because somebody may raise a legitimate question, what I mean is, why can we have an extra meeting, a legally mandated budget hearing, prior to April 19th where the Board of Education has to approve the budget?
It would not be legally mandated budget hearing. It does not say that it can't happen. We have to have one on May 3rd, but something can happen before May 3rd, but it's not legally mandated.
It has to be May 3rd, it has to be May 3rd.
We have to have one on May 3rd.
That they can't be changed prior to April 19th?
Not according to New York State, no.
Okay.
I think the budget conversations that you put in will provide an opportunity for public input, and thank you very much for putting that, for inserting that in the calendar. I think that's a good, a good idea, and that will provide public input. And also, of course, people can make suggestions at the public comments or send requests or emails to the central administration and the Board of Education on what you would like to see as a thing in the budget. Thank you, Mrs. Brandl. Consent agenda, is there anyone who would like to pull something from the consent agenda? Mr. Rubin.
Seven point zero eight.
Anyone else?
Consent agenda resolved, the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated. Seven point zero two, seven point zero three, seven point zero four, seven point zero five, seven point zero six, seven point zero seven, seven point zero nine, seven point one zero, and seven point one one.
Soma.
Okay, Mr. Rubin moved, and Mr. Soma seconded. All those in favor? Six zero.
Seven point zero eight, approval of hold harmless agreement with Duchess County Gymnastics resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the hold harmless agreement with Duchess County Gymnastics, a copy of which is on file with the district clerk.
Motion? Mr. Rubin, second. Mr. Lumia? Discussion? Mr. Rubin.
Thank you. I had some questions about this. I noticed in the readings there that the mats, the district mats are left at this facility, Duchess County Gymnastics, and that facility has the use of our mats while they're, while they're there. I'm not quite, I don't like that idea because I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the mats have a life expectancy, and if they, if this other facility is allowed to use those mats, that would decrease the life expectancy and then result in an increased expenditure cost to the taxpayers, correct?
Yes and no, because at the same time.
Well, as long as we cleared that up.
We're actually paying a certain amount of rent due to the fact that they utilize our mats. Therefore, our rent is.
Reduced.
Reduced.
With a reduction in our rent as a result of the mats being utilized. They are transported back to the district for summer camps, and they're utilized by the district during summer camps.
I have one more question.
Yes, Mr. Rubin.
I, I went onto the website, the Duchess County Gymnastics website, and just from the pictures that I could see, I've not visited the facility, it looks as though the equipment that they have there is similar, at least, to the equipment that I've seen around the district. And I'm wondering, why are we even going there if we have, do we have, do we have the similar equipment, similar services within the district? To my way of thinking, it does, we do, but I'd like to know if we do, are we waving at me?
I'm so excited, I can't wait to see it. We did a lot of work with regard to this area. The gymnastics equipment is not something that can be put up and taken down. So, the reason why this agreement was made was because we do not have the gym space for this equipment to be constantly left available.
Okay.
So, again, we have sports teams that practice later into the evenings because of scheduling gym space, so we really did not have the space. The equipment is not ours that is there. Ours is in storage. So, we do still have gymnastics equipment. If we ever do have the gym space available, we do not have to purchase them.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor? Six zero. Eight point zero one, support staff probationary appointment table from 10/26/15.
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the probationary appointment as stated.
Move.
Okay, move by Mr. Rubin, seconded by Mr. Lumia.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Six zero. Eight point zero two, approval of the revised Board of Education meeting calendar.
Whereas the Board of Education approved this meeting calendar, the reorganization meeting of July 7th, 2015, and whereas the Superintendent of. and whereas the superintendent of schools has requested that the November 30, 2015 meeting be rescheduled to November 23rd, 2015, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the revised Board of Education meeting calendar.
Okay, move, motion? Mr. Somer, seconded by Mr. Rubin. Any discussion? All those in favor? Mrs. Laval, Mr. Somer, Mr. Rubin, Mr. Lumia, and Mrs. Callen, opposed? Abstained. Mrs. Hardeman.
Good hands, right?
Yes, five is a four, it's a majority of the board. Okay? All right. New business. 9.01, approval of the 2016, 2017 budget development calendar.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the budget development calendar for 2016, 17 as detailed memo dated October 22nd, 2015, Executive Director of Financial Development, Superintendent of Schools.
Motion? Mr. Rubin, seconded by Mr. Somer. Any discussion? All those in favor? 6-0. 9.02, receipt of financial reports for September 2015.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby acknowledge receipt of the September 2015 financial reports as stated.
Motion? Mr. Lumia, second. Mr. Rubin?
No, colleague.
Mrs. Hardeman, sorry, Mrs. Hardeman, we're giving her the second. Seconded. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Lumia, is your hand up?
Yes.
6-0. Okay. All right. Number 10, 0.01, board members may request additional agenda items. Mr. Rubin.
I'd like to request in addition to the agenda, and I will hand out the motion that I'd like to read.
Is there, we need a second first. Second by Mr. Lumia. Okay? We need to vote on that, so all those in favor in addition to the agenda? Mr. Lumia, Mrs. Hardeman, Mrs. Callen, Mr. Rubin, Mr. Somer, all opposed? Mrs. Laval? All right. All right, well, now he has to say what it is.
I'm going to pass it down. What I'm requesting is this, that whereas the PPA council recently held a forum attended by approximately 130 people in the Wapenters Junior High School, and by the way, this was co-authored with Mrs. Karath, so by approximately 130 people in the Wapenters Junior High School on Tuesday evening, October 27th, 2015, about the heroin epidemic in Duchess County. And whereas at this forum, the Wapenters Central School District was harshly criticized for inaction by Mr. Joseph Incarnato, one of the district's representatives, to the Duchess County Legislature for not seriously addressing the drug problems faced by the school district. And whereas Mr. Incarnato appears to have made no attempt to investigate what the Wapenters Central School District is doing or has done with regard to addressing the drug problems faced within its jurisdiction. We, the Board of Education of the Wapenters Central School District, move for the Superintendent of Schools to immediately write a letter to Mr. Robert Rollison, Chairman of the Duchess County Legislature, outlining the measures that have been and are being taken, and ask that a full and public apology for the public accusations made against the Wapenters School District by a member of its governing body be provided immediately. Furthermore, the Board of Education of the Wapenters Central School District takes offense to the statements made by Mr. Incarnato and believes his incendiary comments dishonor and harm the ability of the Duchess County Legislature and the Wapenters Central School District in their continuing efforts to address this serious epidemic.
Now, was that a motion? Do we have a second to this motion? Mr. Somer, discussion? Mrs. Laval?
I'm not sure if this comment should have been made before we go to add it to the agenda, but why is this added to the agenda tonight? My understanding from the school board training that I attended by NISPA as well as the open meeting law is additions to the agenda are supposed to relate to items discussed in executive session. I'm not sure why this is coming up now. And that's, that's one concern. The other concern is I'm really not sure that, oh, first of all, of all the things that were covered that evening, that this is the most significant that we need to address, and I'm also not sure that it's appropriate for the district to chastise the legislature based on the comments made at this presentation.
Other comments? Mr. Lumia.
Well, when somebody from the public accuses the district of not doing something regarding the drug problem, that should be addressed. I don't care whether it's legislative or otherwise. The district has done a lot great deal about the drug problems. And I'm going to upset myself. I've heard this at the last PTA meeting that occurred. And I'll tell you right now, it's not appropriate, especially if we see Incarnato on the board before. He should know better. As far as I'm concerned, I second the motion, I support it.
Any other comments? Mrs. Hardeman.
Was there any reaction from the PTA council itself in this regard? Because I know I've attended several sessions that have been provided by both the district and by the PTA council in regards to this issue that we face in Duchess County as a whole and specifically within the Perkewa district.
By the council, no.
Is there any other comments? Mrs. Laval?
I was present at the meeting, and as I recall, I don't believe that Mr. Incarnato exercised his authority on behalf of the Duchess County Legislature. I just don't believe that the Chairman of the Legislature is responsible for, you know, to answer for Mr. Incarnato.
Mr. Rubin?
He never disavowed that he was speaking only for himself.
My personal feeling is that although I think it was a totally erroneous comment by Mr. Incarnato and that he should not have accused the district without having checked his facts. On the other hand, I think Mrs. Laval made a good point that, first of all, that this is, that perhaps this is not really appropriate for us to do as an addition to the agenda, although it was raised in the comment time. I voted in favor of it because I knew there were a number of people who wanted to air this and discuss it. I agree also that the legislature can, head of the legislature can hardly be held responsible for everything that their members say, any more than the Board of Education can be held responsible for everything that any member, individual member says. And I also question whether this is an appropriate way of dealing with it. We have free speech in this country, and although sometimes painful and the speech is inaccurate and defamatory, nonetheless, that's one of the, one of the prices we pay for our rights and under the Bill of Rights and the First Amendment. And I think perhaps escalating this by trying to get an apology out of the legislature, which I'm pretty sure will not happen, is not the best way to deal with this problem. Perhaps the better way is to discuss with our communications director, how we can better get out to the public, more information on exactly what the district is doing, because we do do a great deal on this very difficult situation of heroin. Any addiction problem is, is hard to deal with. And as a nation, we've tried everything. We've tried the war on drugs. We tried before that with alcoholism. We tried prohibition. A complete answer doesn't seem to be there. And I think everyone needs to be working on trying to solve this. And perhaps this is, we need to get out the positive information, and I don't think this is the best way to correct the misconceptions out there.
Then you, Mrs., I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Rubin.
Mr. President, I was at that meeting. We were publicly humiliated by our less than stellar, our less than stellar reactions or programs there. And I think this district does a lot. If the war on drugs was easy to win, it would have been won in 1965. It's not. It's a complex problem. And for somebody of Mr. Incarnato's stature to stand up here and to stand up in this auditorium and point his finger at me and tell us, say that the Board of Education and the district is not doing enough, is a situation that is intolerable and, in my opinion, demands a response to him and to the body that he's part of.
Any other comments? Mrs. Hardeman.
I would have to agree with President Callen that demanding a public apology will escalate this. I think I agree with parts of this in that I would hope that our administration in the district would reach out to our Duchess County Legislature and let them know how we are working to address this really tragic situation. And perhaps look for ways that we can work in combination to support each other in, so that, also that Mrs. Callen mentioned having our communications officer get information out to the public, but also specifically having our administration contact our legislature, you know, Mr. Robert Rollison, not in a way where we're demanding an apology, but saying, "We understand that your body doesn't have the information about what we are doing, and so we're offering to inform you."
So are you looking to make an amendment?
No, not really.
Because if you're willing, if you want to make that amendment, we could vote on the amendment. That would be acceptable.
Mr. Lumia?
I think that that's an appropriate amendment to make.
Could you be specific about what amendment you're making?
I hadn't thought about it as an amendment. I was just trying to.
Two things that can be taken. Number one, we can send a letter directly to Mr. Incarnato, express our concern about his statement, misstatement. That's one possibility. I was saying, send a letter. Instead of, you're not going to get an apology. I don't think it's appropriate.
Well, I think what you're suggesting, if I may say the amendment, is that, sorry, Mrs. Hardeman, I think what you might be suggesting is that we sent, write a letter to Mr. Rollison, Chairman of the Duchess County Legislature, outlining the measures that have been and are being taken by the district and delete the following, delete that sentence after there. Am I correct?
So you want the first paragraph to be the way it is?
Well, the only thing when I look down at that third paragraph, that "We, the Board of Education of the Wapenters Central School District, move for the Superintendent of Schools to immediately write a letter to Mr. Robert Rollison, Chairman of the Duchess County Legislature, outlining the measures that have been and are being taken." So it's just deleting the part after that, there. The rest of it remains the same. I think, am I correct, Mrs. Hardeman? Would that suffice for what you're suggesting?
I might like to add something at the bottom, at the end of the last paragraph, that we looked to work together with the Duchess County Legislature to address this. And I'm just, I'm not really prepared to amend it, so I'm thinking through it.
Mrs. Callen?
Yes, Mrs. Laval.
This is the reason why I feel that it was inappropriate to do this as an addition to the agenda. I think that it matters how we address the legislature. And I would motion to table this so that we can come up with what we really want to say in response to this.
Do we have a second for tabling? Mrs. Hardeman? There's no discussion on tabling the motion, so all those in favor of tabling it? Only four. All right. Just four. It was Mr. Lumia, Mrs. Hardeman, Mrs. Callen, and Mrs. Laval. And we need five to do anything, right? All right, then I guess we're back to discussing this. Yeah, with the letter, yes. Accepting this resolution or not.
I don't really have an amendment.
Well, can I amend my own amendment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, yes, Mr. Rubin.
I would like to amend my own First Amendment there, that we would just delete the following. We would say, "We, the Board of Education of the Wapenters Central School District, move for the Superintendent of Schools to immediately write a letter to Mr. Robert Rollison, Chairman of the Duchess County Legislature, outlining the measures that have been and are being taken." And from the word "and" to, and delete it. And ask that a full and public apology for the public accusations made against the Wapenters Central School District by a member of its governing body be provided immediately. Delete that part of that phrase.
Yeah, I think that's what you said, yes. Mrs. Laval?
Are you suggesting, Mr. Rubin, not delete the last paragraph in transposing Mr. Incarnato's incendiary comments dishonoring and harming the ability of the legislature and school district?
I'm not suggesting that. I'm saying that.
Oh, because would you, Mrs. Laval, did you want to amend it to eliminate that last paragraph?
I would, I don't, I don't want to amend it. I just don't.
Yes.
I think we have an amendment.
What the amendment was, we'll vote on, you don't, we'll vote on Mr. Rubin's amendment, first of all.
We need a second.
We need a second for Mr. Rubin's amendment. Okay, Mr. Somer? All those in, any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment that Mr. Rubin proposed? Mr. Lumia, Mr. Somer, and Mr. Rubin? Okay, and opposed to the amendment? Abstention? Mrs. Hardeman, Mrs. Laval, and Mrs. Callen? All right? All right, are there any further amendments, any further discussion? I think we're ready to vote on the resolution. All those in favor of the request to add the following on this resolution? All those in favor? Mr. Lumia, Mr. Somer, Mr. Rubin, all those opposed? Mrs. Hardeman, Mrs. Laval, Mrs. Callen? Did get by. Okay, are there any other requests for additions to the agenda? All right? All right, then we have comments from the public, 30 minutes. Again, following the first, the rules read before, but this time it can be on items that are not on the agenda.
Hi, I'm Lauren Ryan.
Microphone on, is it on?
It's not on. No. I don't think I need it.
And what I just witnessed is fury. I can't believe you just spent that amount of time because your feelings are hurt and there's kids dying and your feelings are hurt? I remember a meeting a few years ago about a, a letter that you drafted that was supposed to go to the governor. I had it go into executive session.
Excuse me, Mrs. Ryan, we're not allowed to make that. You can come up and talk to Mr. Ruben after the meeting.
Sorry, I'm, I'm getting past it, but I have to say it's just as ludicrous as today. The kids need to come first, and that includes heroin overdose, any other form of overdosing. That that should have been first, not about the feelings. And that fellow was speaking for himself. You don't know where people are coming from. I just can't even believe that had to come up tonight, but not that the epidemic itself is as important, if not way more. That is what is priority. And I don't think you have any clue how deep in the schools heroin is. And if you did know, that's where your attention would have been. All right, I'm moving on. APTR and the school report cards. I'm kind of glad you trashed it because it's, it's malarkey anyway. None of it's true. None of it is factual. Anything that was shown tonight is not factual. Between the refusals, between the curves, none of it is factual. Some of it gave up on it. And for Miss Wakima, you did a wonderful job. I don't know how you were able to mess it all up. But it sounded like a 401K plan is made. You know? And again, the teachers and the students are being let down. That's where your letter needs to be directed. Whether it's the law or not, if it's wrong and it doesn't make sense, speak up. If I tell you to jump off the Brooklyn Bridge, would you do it because it's the law? No, you wouldn't. The kids are not getting anything out of this, and nor are the teachers, and it's not fair. Nothing I heard tonight was consistent. Nothing, none of it. And it's going to change again. You're all out with the tools to assess. Fight the fight. It's the common core that is the problem. The tests are teaching to the test. It's wrong, and that's not where the assessment should be. And the assessment should be local. That's where it should be. I was very happy to hear chocolate comments tonight against what was presented, and the presentation was really good. No problem with that. I just, I just think it's a total waste of time. And I think that the boards should be standing up to where the fight needs to be fought, and that is with the curriculum and not the assessment. There's too much time wasted. Please worry about the kids, please.
And slow show again, town of East Fishville. You can schedule a meeting, budget hearing meeting prior to April nineteenth if you so desire. That is allowed, although you still have your mandated meeting. We have a sitting board member who has missed close to fifty percent of board meetings since taking office in July two thousand fourteen. Is that board member going to be removed as a trustee? And someone explained to me the job description of the school lunch monitors in this district. The fact that district employees would tell elementary school students that they are not allowed to read a book while eating lunch is incomprehensible to me. And I quote, "You should be socializing during lunch, not reading." Well, I guess the mission statement to empower our students are just words, not action. I thought we were all supposed to follow this. Can someone also explain to me, and perhaps there is a reason for this that I'm not aware of? Why is recess still being used as a punishment for students who, for whatever reason, may not finish their classwork or may have a behavioral issue in class? In my opinion, if a student doesn't finish their work, when it, and it then becomes part of their homework, and then returned the next day, signed by their parent. If this isn't done, then I guess you would give the student a zero for that particular assignment. Dr. Bunn, one of the leaders of this district, clearly as the sky is blue and the grass is green, said during the Code of Conduct meeting over the summer that loss of recess will not be used as a punishment. Do all district employees know this? Guess some of them forgot to turn in their signed acknowledgement for reading of the Code of Conduct. You're meeting with the commissioner that's coming up. What board members that are attending, what are you going to be saying to this commissioner about what's going on in the district? Do you plan to tell her that fifty percent of the students refuse the tests in this district, and that number will likely increase this year? Will you tell her that more and more parents are unhappy with the New York State Education Department and the continued push of Common Core, and how this has hurt many children in this district and in the state, especially our special needs students and our gifted students as well? Several board members have expressed at board meetings that they would like to hear from the teachers. Well, guess what you have? In an op-ed two weeks ago in the Southern Dutchess News, the Wappintra Congress of Teachers expressed their dissatisfaction with not only APTR, but how the students in this district are losing out on a well-rounded education because of teaching for the test, as well as many other components of Common Core. So now we have the parents, students, and finally, the Wappintra Congress of Teachers have expressed their concerns. It is now time for this board to stand up and tell New York State that an overwhelming percentage of this district is not in favor of Common Core. We are not interested in being a Common Core institute, and we want our teachers to stop wasting time out of the classroom for TBIS training. Teachers want their classrooms back, and students and parents want teachers back to give our children a well-rounded education. Are you going to take comments from students and parents and teachers in a district survey in order to properly convey our feelings to the commissioner? You represent the people of this school district, and it is your responsibility to speak to the public for which you serve.
Excuse me, but applause or boos are not really allowed. If you'd like to speak, you may come up and speak. Thank you.
My name is Janika Spelding, parent of two children in the Wappintra schools. Two comments, or two topics now I talk about tonight. And they both actually are in regard to education of parents as to what goes on in the district. Because I think a lot of us, and I'm pretty involved in a lot of these meetings, I go to every single possible meeting, I can go to PTA meetings, council meetings, et cetera. So these are some things that parents would like to know. I did go to the PTA council meeting last week on the heroin epidemic, and as a parent, I would like to know what is being done in this district, particularly at the elementary level. I would hope that we can use that district-wide parent workshop that's coming up in December to maybe talk about that and educate parents as to what is being done, because we do have concerns as to what, what is being told to the kids? Are they being introduced to drug awareness, et cetera? I know years ago, when my older one was in school, we had DARE or DARE-type programs. And the National PTA program is Grand Riven Week that is related to drug awareness, and that's no longer, at least in the schools that my kids are in. I understand that both have been taken out of the schools for whatever reason, I don't know why. One of the reasons I heard was because parents don't want drugs talked about in the elementary schools, which I was surprised about. And Mr. Kery, you mentioned the CATE program? I don't know much about that. I don't know if it's education for children or for the parents, or it's an intervention program, but I hadn't heard of it before tonight. And if that's something that is going on in the elementary schools, is it an awareness for the children, and is happening in all the elementary schools, or one elementary school, or is it pretty highlighted? I'm just not sure. I'd love for my kids, you know, to be part of that education. I do what I can at home, too, but it's nice to know that it comes from another source. My second topic is report cards. I've been hearing tons of different things from different elementary school parents about report cards. I guess that some parents, as partners, nice teachers, and the administration talk about changes that are coming. I haven't heard about these changes yet, and again, I'm pretty involved, so I'm surprised I haven't heard anything. I'd like to, I'd like to see if you could use that district-wide parent workshop on December fifth to talk about these changes. Unfortunately, it's going to be after report cards, for the first quarter to come out. Mr. Loomia, thank you for mentioning that there was a meeting about report cards, changes to report, if I'd wish I'd known about it, I would have definitely attended. Again, my concern is that not all parents know about these changes that are coming. I don't. And what's involved, and what's the rationale behind them. Many parents are going to be very surprised as to what these changes may or may not entail. And they're concerned about the scores the children are receiving. I'm hearing that teachers are telling parents that there's going to be a lot more twos and threes given out and a lot less fours. I don't know why, but that's the facts I'm hearing. I'm also hearing there are not going to be any more pluses and minuses. I'm not sure if that's true. And a lot of parents, including myself, are concerned about the criteria that will be being used for the seventh and eighth grade honors programs due to changes in the report cards. Thank you very much.
Are there any other comments from the public?
Allison, I'd be interested. I actually wrote down my questions to the presentation, like actually what was going to be the end of...
Put it up, put it up. I can't hear you.
Thank you.
I wrote down questions for myself, coming to see your presentation, thinking I would be jotting down the answers for myself. Although we couldn't finish that presentation, which is relevant to us and our kids, particularly like the odd-up numbers, the weekly ad school, or more likely the demographics, the statistics laws, to make every kid's psyche and put them in one. And as we were just about to get some real answers about how it affects the curve and the slope, we couldn't vote, we couldn't, so we could vote to extend a conversation about some legislature employees that, about heroin epidemic, but we really are not doing much about. I've never, I will come to every meeting, I'll say this every time I get up here, because I'm going to every meeting now, as everyone else, I've never, or rarely ever heard a story, sit here and talk about a drug problem, but we spend fifty to twenty minutes on the info. Instead of saying that this is what this man said, let's reach out and see what he has to offer. You know, I think it's really standard. He, I don't, I'd sleep in order to, I think it was a PTA mom in one of the buildings that actually found that report. So I don't know, I, I kind of wonder where the clarities are. When we can't discuss some of these important aspects of kids' test scores or IMPs without meaning, or we can talk about how the district was insulted. I'm not insulted, I, all the parents in here, that some man got up and said that we're not doing it. And it's not because Wappintra sucks and this district is better, it's just the problem is bigger than it ever was before. I don't think it was a personal insult to anyone in this room, more than it was we need to do as much as we can. So I, I would ask you all to readdress, and we vote to print a new agenda item to give parents in this room and any administrators, to be able to finish what was actually on the agenda. Thank you.
Any other comments?
What exactly has the board done?
Excuse me, could you state your name, please? Thank you, it helps with the minutes. Thanks.
Thanks. Exactly what has the board done to help with the heroin habit?
Your name, please.
Cole.
Thank you.
What exactly have the board done to help with what programs do they have to help with the heroin habit?
We, it, it's not, just to explain, this is not really a question to the board now in the administration. So be sure and write that down and, and give it to our substitute tonight, to the district clerk, and she'll see to it that it's answered on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Is that correct? Mr. Carey, is that the way we're doing it? Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? If you have any you would like to submit to, you know, things you'd like to have answered and put on the website, we have this nice new feature.
Good evening, Carolyn Poilone. I have something to say. But could we, three minutes, I'm not sure. I can say, in regards to the new APR, how is it fair if a stranger comes into a classroom with a teacher knowing nothing about their teaching style or class? As for student performance, how can a teacher be held accountable for student's performance if that student refuses to do the work? If the parent hasn't worked with the student, or simply, or simply if the student is not participating? Also, what if the student comes from a hospital? For approximately fifty percent have to be years old, and I just realized here, there will appear me, that we have to use more than fifty percent of those laws to make up for the massive refusal that you will be expecting to hear. Thank you.
Anyone else? Then could we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Loomia, seconded by Mr. Selma. All those in favor? Six-zero. Thank you.